Begin our meeting for August 19th. And we need to approve the agenda.
Mr. Chair, there's a few changes here. You can strike Chad Larson's opioid settlement item. There was an update to which ditch the final payment was for. Also, under Public Works, an addition of approving Central Lakes Trail crack filling quote. Dave Forst has been added with vacation home rental compliance and enforcement issues. And out-of-state travel has been added for Jacob Turner. We are starting with Resolution 2561 today.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I second. Thank you, Charlie. Thank you, Jeff. Any questions? Laney.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Next is approved draft minutes of August 5th, 2025 regular meeting.
I make a motion to approve the minute from August 5th.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty. Next, we have Imogen Hansen Ford with Douglas County HRA.
Good morning, guys. My name is Sarah Alstead. I'm the accountant with Douglas County HRA. And Emma and I are here today to present to you our 2026 budget, as well as our request for levy. And Emma is going to talk about some of the fun things that we are up to.
It's good morning, Chair Rapp and Commissioners. We have had a good year, so I just want to give a quick highlight of that, of what we've been up to. So we have the rehabilitation program has been more successful than it ever has been. And that's a program that helps homeowners of low income make necessary repairs in their homes. And then they get to stay in their homes and provides them the ability to do that at an economical way. So that's been more successful than it's ever been. Janelle's really taken that to new heights. Our voucher programs over the past year have assisted and are currently assisting 56 families, 65 elderly homes, and 135 disabled homes in this county. That's a total of $136,523 in payments to landlords in the county, which equals 1.6 million landlord payments annually from the Douglas County HRA through federal and state funds. That's a good chunk, helpful for landlords as well as the people that we serve. So we're placing some really good families in good locations. We've had a lot of collaborations with our local communities, talking about future plans and developments while developing a housing study, a more current housing study. And we've assisted Habitat for Humanity with five gap financing loans for homes in Alexandria and Meltona. And that's been through the Housing Trust Fund that we approved last year, which has been successful. We had new auditors for the first time in 30 years. And if you can ever test to having new auditors, you wonder what did the old auditors maybe miss that we didn't know? Nothing. We had a really good and clean audit, so we're very happy and proud of that. Kudos to Sarah and the team for making that happen. Our housing study is complete, has some really great information. And Jeff had attended the kickoff meeting, which we discussed what we wanted to maybe know. And now we'll be having, October 17th, we'll be having informational meeting by the presenter to tell us what it all tells us. But it has some really great information, so I'm excited. And you guys are invited. I'll send invites to you guys to come and find out what they have developed outside the city of Alec, telling us what our needs are. Belmont Restoration is going great. Everybody's been very happy. The community's been loving to see that building come back. And the Housing Trust Fund has been very proactive in the things it is doing, as well as matching grants for the Belmont Restoration and the Gap Homebuyers Grants. We received a matching grant from the state of an additional $150,000. That will be applied to the restorations as well as more homebuyer grants, because those two programs have been very successful, and we want to fill the need that's there. BIH vouchers is a new state-funded voucher program that we applied for. And we were recently awarded $80,000 for startup costs, which means hiring a new employee, as well as all the things that go with hiring a new employee, computer equipment, et cetera. And $480,716 additional dollars annually for voucher rental assistance payments for the Douglas County area administration. And finally, we appeared, applied for a Tier Two grant for the city of Osakis to help them with public infrastructure on some new development they're hoping to accomplish. That's the positive wonderful things that we've been running through the office over the past year and continue to look at new funding opportunities and new ways we can support affordable housing. And I just want to tip on a little bit of the bad. Recent information from the federal government tells us that at, right now, sitting in our appropriations committee is an 11% cut to public housing operating funds, as well as level spending for capital funds. So just a quick note, operating funds from the federal government for our public housing units covers things like utilities for the programs, administration, all kinds of different things like that. So we're looking at 11% cut there. And level spending for the capital fund program seems great, means they're not going to cut us. But just for your information, we only receive about $94,000 a year for 28 units. That's 3,200 a unit to make capital improvements. I don't know what capital improvements we're making with that, but, you know. So even to level off funding there is kind of like a cut due to inflation of materials and et cetera. And then we are receiving a small increase in voucher programs, 5.7%. However, HUD data shows that rents have increased to 9%. Not, so it's not going to cover it as well as the administration is not going to cover it. And a 6% cut to those small cities programs that we love to see in our smaller communities, which we are applying for a small cities grant this funding round for Brandon, Evansville, and Brandon, Evansville, and Garfield together as a multi-city app. So that's a 6% cut to that program. There's not much we can do about that at the county level. But I just wanted to share a little bit of the funding wall that we're looking at coming up in 2026 and how some of this budget levy stuff is in preparation for supporting our community with those cuts. And that's any questions to you guys?
Yeah, I just have a question. I've not seen it on here. What does a housing study cost? What does a housing study cost?
I believe it was $38,000.
And that was part of last year's levy and budget.
Okay, yep.
Or part of last year's budget. Yep, $38,000.
Okay, so do you see that being beneficial? I mean, where you can make that back by having a study like that?
Yeah. So the study tells us a next five-to-10-year plan of what we're missing in the county as far as where developers, it doesn't necessarily have to be the Douglas County HRA or the county filling that gap. But it also helps us work with developers and realtors on where we should be focusing so we're not building things that aren't needed out in rural Minnesota. An overarching, quick, quick find was we need about 30 entry-level homes over the next five years outside of Alexandria. This had nothing to do with Alexandria. The city limits of Alexandria were excluded from this. And a very large amount of income-restricted, age-restricted rental and smaller homes. So for the boomer generation that's retiring and wants to get out of their larger homes and get into something smaller and more income-restricted, affordable, which would fill part of the other need, which is entry-level homes for other families. So people living in the rural communities maybe have a four- or five-bedroom house that they raised their family in for years, and now they're 70 years old, still very capable, 75, but they don't need the four- or five-bedroom house, but they don't need assisted living either. So we have that gap of very healthy elderly population who can live on their own but are still in these four- or five-bedroom houses. So that's a lot of what the communities and I talk about, Osakis, Evansville, Brandon. That's they talk, we talk a lot about, that's a big thing for them is they have families ready to move. Or not families, they have elderly people ready to move out of these larger homes into something, but it has to be affordable. And the housing study supports that. So it tells everybody where to direct our funds to, direct our potential property developments towards, so we're not developing something that's not needed.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yep.
Imogen, is the city HRA doing anything other than the apartment complex over there? Or are they doing any houses right now?
They are, they have a couple, as far as I know. They have a couple of smaller projects they've bought, I think, either some, either foreclosed or dilapidated properties, demolished those properties, have not decided if they're redoing it. I think one thing that Mr. Hess and I have discussed about, you know, the rehabbing and reselling of, you know, because that's a potential too for those entry-level homes, is purchasing a small home in a community at a reasonable price, rehabbing it, selling it to a family, providing some gap funds. I think they're looking more at how to restructure that program for them because Mr. Hess found that they would sell them. And then a year or two later, they would turn around and resell them at a profit because of the current housing market. There were no restrictions to it.
There wasn't any restrictions.
Yeah, yeah. And so, and they realized that that was, you know, and when the housing market wasn't like it is now, it probably wasn't an issue. But all of a sudden, now the housing market has changed. It's going to change again probably soon, but during the last few years, it's changed. So I believe that is, I can't speak for Mr. Hess, you know? But that, I believe that is why they pulled back from doing that as much.
Abbottad had to change the rules on theirs because of.
They got it, they got it. They're like, this isn't our intent. This wasn't the intent, which would also not be our intent if something like that is not to sell you an entry-level home at a reasonable price just so that you can turn around in a year.
Right.
And sell it at triple the cost.
Right, right.
You know, like I said, it worked before the housing market skyrocketed, but now that it's skyrocketed, so they've pulled back. But yeah, a lot of developments, and they have those lodged pad units, which are very successful. And they've started the daycare pods, so we're, we're talking with them about how that's going. Their design of a duplex versus the Morrison design that we all looked at before, which was kind of like a strip mall, you know?
They put them over in, over in the Fida edition over there.
Yeah, so we're, we're watching.
In between the apartments or something.
Yeah, we're watching how they go, because I know West Central Initiative is another agency that I've been in collaboration with, and they say just in the Ashby-Evansville area, they're short 91 units of childcare.
Yeah.
So they all intertwine, you know? We want to say housing has nothing to do with childcare, but it's not true. It's just like housing has nothing to do with workforce. It's not true. If you don't have work, you don't have housing. If you don't have housing, you don't have work. But if you don't have childcare for people to go to work, none of them work. And then transportation's your fourth thing you throw in there. If you don't have work in a small community, then they have to transport to the larger. It's all, they're all intertwined, so we should all be working together too. So I'm looking forward to seeing how theirs goes. And then circling back around in future and talking about what we can do with maybe West Central Initiative and other organizations about filling that daycare pod need. And is that the right place for us to be? It could be.
Okay, and just one more question on that housing study. Is that something that you do every five years or are you ten to five years roughly?
Every five to 10, as needed. So I think 2019 was the last time we did it. So it's been quite a while. So it's not something that does annually. It is expensive.
Yep.
Definitely is expensive. The data, so, and that is shareable, so, you know, if you guys ever want to see it, let me know. I can send to you. It's 270 pages of riveting reading. So, yeah. I read it all, and then I asked him, can you break it down to me what it really all means? So, but it has great data in it. It does.
Okay.
Yeah. And I know it's a big price tag to swallow, but it's not every year.
All right. All right. Any other questions? Okay, well, and it's an action item. We got.
Board's wishes here.
I make a motion, we approve resolution for the tax levy request of HRA, the county HRA. Resolution 25-61.
Thank you, Charlie.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys, so much for your support.
Mr. Erickson, you're next.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We are going to talk some drainage, because it's super fun. The first item that we have is a final payment on ditch 10 repairs. Mike can tell you if, how that went. I think it went pretty well.
Yep. So that was the project up on County Ditch 10, where clones were replacing a portion with tile at their expense. And this was the cleaning of the downstream portion. We did come in over $1,000 less than estimated for a total cost of 845. And I'm just looking for final payment confirmation on that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to make the final payment on County Road Ditch 10, or County Ditch 10, not Road.
Thank you, Shane.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Our next item will be another request on that same portion of County Ditch 10. This is the upstream portion of where that tile was installed. After the tiles was installed, it's evident that this portion has quite a bit of vegetation and sediment built up in it. They weren't sure where they were going to end. There wasn't enough cover to do tile for this last portion, and they would like to get this cleaned. This would be at the ditch's expense. There should be money in the account for it.
So Mike, basically, just 750 feet need to be cleaned?
Yep, it should be similar to that other portion that was already, that we just approved payment on.
I'll make a motion to approve the request of James Cone to clean 750 feet of ditch on 10, County Ditch 10.
Thank you. Thank you, Tim.
I'll second.
Thank you, Shane.
Mr. Chair.
Charlie.
It says that there's a loan balance on the account of 35.
Yes.
And this is going to add another 10.
It's.
Do we need to raise the percentage? That's what.
So the, the current levy is going to bring in that 9,339 this year.
Yep.
That first portion was $845. So I mean, we're still in the black on the year. We're maybe not paying down as fast as we would like to see on that loan balance, so.
Maybe we should look at that.
Yeah.
Okay, increasing the assessment.
Do you know what the percentage is on the assessment?
Um, right offhand, I do not.
Okay.
Looks like you have 80% down here.
Okay, is it? Oh, yeah, it's right in there. 80%.
Turn 80% levy.
Yeah, so, right in front of my face, nothing.
Okay.
Call for the question.
Yep.
Okay, Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty.
Okay, this next one is over by Evansville. This is County Ditch 3, Branches 4 and 5. Earlier this year, we cleaned the portion of Branch 5 downstream of 82. This is going upstream now. So this first request is for the section that's to be cleaned. That will be at the ditch's expense. The upstream portion will be tile at the landowner's expense. But this first, we'll stay on the first one. That'll be ditch's expense. The ditch did have a balance of $2,635 on 1-1. The levy should bring in $25,203 this year. The earlier work, the bill that I've received so far is $3,557, so. And this is another system that does currently have a loan of $41,000 on it.
Board's wishes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve cleaning ditch 3.
Thank you, Shane.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions?
I just got one here.
Okay.
It says here on the Johnson-Sukow, it's, they're going to replace the open ditch with tile.
Yes.
At his expense?
That's at the landowner's expense, yes. That's the next request, yeah. This, the first one is cleaning of the open ditch downstream of that, yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, Laney, please.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty.
All right. And this last one is the portion upstream of that, that the landowners would like to replace the open ditch with tile. That will be done at their expense. And then once the tile is installed and approved, it will, you know, return to the county ditch system.
Okay. Board's wishes.
I'll make a motion to approve the Kevin Johnson, Shelley Sukow ditch cleaning request on County Ditch 3.
Thank you, Tim.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Um, next item that I have is to schedule our fall planning meeting. I know I sent out an email with a bunch of different dates, either the Monday, Tuesday before Thanksgiving, or Wednesday through Friday the week before, the week before Thanksgiving. I know my preference was going to be that Tuesday, the 25th, of November.
The day works for me.
I had replied to you that it works for me.
I think I did too, yeah.
Did you say the 25th?
25th of November, yes.
What time would that be, Tim? 9?
We could either do 8 or 9 o'clock, whatever works better. I suppose 8 works best for you guys.
What do you want?
I'm good with 8.
How long of a meeting do you think?
It'll always go longer than I think it will, so I'll have you out of there by, definitely by noon, but I'll shoot for 11.
Let's do it at 8.
They're going to be out by 10.
8 o'clock. 25th of November?
Yes.
Yep.
Yes.
Oh, Derek, your place?
Yes.
Okay, and.
Okay, then the last item that I have for you guys is that's.
Wait, we're going to make.
Do we need to act on that?
Yeah, it says, so we do.
We sure need to act on that.
Well.
It's just setting up a meeting.
Yeah, it says action. I don't know. All right. Very well, then we'll move on to your Central Lakes.
Final item that we have then is Central Lakes Trail crack ceiling. Those bids came in on Friday. You can see those sitting in front of you. This is for the stretch going between Alexandria and Osakis. With that being 14, 550 from Precision Asphalt, we'd make that recommendation that you award that. The, the funding for this is out of that 40-plus thousand dollars we get from the DNR every year, so that's where that'll come. If there's any money left over of that, which there sure should be, we might spread that out a little bit longer at that price. I think Brad is in the back of the room if he's got any other items to add to that, or if you guys have any other questions.
Have you had Precision do work before?
I think they're the ones that did it the last two or three years.
That's what I was thinking, that they.
No.
So there's quite a difference in price.
Yes.
Yeah, quite a bit, yeah. All righty, and that's, that's good, but that is something that we, we're going to do.
We have to approve it.
Right.
Make a motion, we take the bid from Precision Asphalt for the crack filling.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions?
Mr. Chair, I have a question. How long of a span are we talking on the Central Lakes Trail?
Width or length?
Well, from the starting point.
So, so if this 14 grand is from Alexandria all the way out to Osakis.
Okay.
But because this is less than what we have, we have more money than this, we'll, we'll probably go a little bit further and use up the money that we have from the DNR. So exactly how far beyond Alexandria, I don't know, but it'll definitely be between Alec and Osakis.
Okay, so nothing.
Until we run out of money.
Until we run out of, we'll go west until we run out of money.
All right. Well, that's going to be a rough riding trail, getting on a bike trail. And it feels like we're going on a speed bump when we're.
We're trying to keep your speed below 20.
On a bike?
All righty. Laney, please.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, just a second here. Laney, we're going to go back to number five. It calls for action. We didn't do it. I, let's do action on that one. So we need a motion.
I think it has to be reposted.
Need a motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion to have the Public Works meeting on November 25th at 8:00 AM.
Thank you, Shane.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Laney, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Okay. Land and resource. Rebecca.
Morning.
Morning.
The first item on the agenda is approval of licenses.
Board's wishes.
I'll make a motion, we approve the disposal hauler licenses.
Thank you, Charlie.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Upstein.
Kalina.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
Item two, final plat of Bell River Edition.
Any questions on this?
I was out there for reviewing, and I will make the motion to approve with the two conditions.
Thank you, Tim.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Way.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Number three is final plat of Sahara Beach First Edition.
Board's wishes.
I will make a motion to approve Sahara Beach First Edition as presented.
Thank you, Tim.
I second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Meyer.
Yep.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Way.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Number four is the final plat of Carlson Acres.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the final plat for Carlson Acres.
Thank you, Shane.
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number five is a conditional use for Church in the Pines. Uh, the conditional use was for, to allow two illuminated signs, and the condition was the signs must not be illuminated between 10:00 PM and 6:00 AM.
Board's wishes.
Mr. Chair, I was out there when we did it, and it's gonna be hidden by the pine trees for the wet, uh, east sign, and the other one is gonna be basically a lot smaller sign than that, and, uh, we found no issues with it, so...
All right.
I will make a motion to approve.
Thank you, Tim.
With conditions.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Charlie, any other questions? Laney, please.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Upstain.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Item number six is the findings of fact supporting denial of the DOB properties.
And I did read that, and, uh, I thought it was accurate. Anybody else have a question on that?
No, I, I feel that it's very accurate, and what, did who, uh, put this together? Dave, or, yeah, I, it pretty much explains everything that we had, uh, agreed upon. So all we need to do is accept it.
Correct.
I'll make a motion to accept the findings of fact.
Thank you, Tim.
Supporting denial for DOB properties.
Thank you, Tim. I'll second it. Laney, please.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Dave Forrest.
Hello, Mr. Chair, my name is David Forrest. Um, I'm here, I wanna talk about vacation rental property today, real quick. Um, so for the past two summers, um, I've lived next to a vacation rental property on Lake Calgary, 628 East Lake Calgary Road, and, uh, for the past two summers, she has routinely, um, not followed the county ordinances. I've worked very closely with Dave Rush on this, he's fully in the know of what's happening. He's not here today, but he knows I'm here, and, um, she is licensed for 12 people, but she routinely, routinely rents to 15 to 25 people. As that happens, we have parking issues, noise issues, and trespassing issues. So, um, the county has written very good ordinances, I think, um, and, you know, I can read some of these off. Recognize vacation rentals can have a negative impact on neighbor, on neighbors. Ordinances allow vacation rentals, but establish standards with the intent to mitigate and eliminate potential impact, excuse me, impacts to well-being of neighboring property owners. Establish basic performance standards and controls to address nuisance issues that can be enforced through licensing. Require license E to address the vacation home rental issues. Establish rental management standards that require the vacation rental to operate in compliance with regulations while maintaining a positive relationship with neighboring landowners. Hold rental property owners responsible for guest conduct through clearly defining enforcement measures. So, uh, the severity of each should increase with, uh, the documentation of repeat violations. Um, so again, here's the situation. Uh, I think the county has great ordinances, but nowhere, no way to police them or enforce them. Um, so, again, I've worked with Dave Rush over the last two years. Um, I've given him literally hundreds of emails, texts, pictures, um, we're nowhere closer to getting a resolution on this situation. Um, I've tried dealing with the rental owner herself. Um, she is very difficult to deal with. Um, I, I spoke to her about all the issues, and her response is, if there's too many people, her response is, David, stop watching my property. If the response is, they're, uh, the tenants are being too loud, he's, she says, David, just please shut your windows. If the people are trespassing my property, she says, David, just go walk down and tell them to go away. That's not my responsibility. Responsibility is, is on her, and of course, hopefully, the county to enforce the ordinances that are written. Um, so, beyond that, um, I did meet with, um, Shane and Charlie about, back in April. We had a good meeting, I think, you guys. Um, we agreed at that point in time that, yes, we need to police this, we need to enforce this, but, um, Dave hasn't given me any updates, so to my knowledge, I don't think anything has progressed, um, on this issue. Um, Dave had asked me to work with the Sheriff's Department to enforce this, which I've done. Um, the response back to the Sheriff's Department is, we are here to protect the public, not to enforce neighborly issues. So, um, again, the bottom line here, guys, is, is I've spent the last two summers policing the situation. Um, it's, it's, it's not fun. Um, I shouldn't have to do this, and, and I, I'm hoping that the county can certainly, uh, support us by implementing some measures to, to enforce some of the ordinance that are, are written.
Okay, I have a question. Do you, do you think offense would have any, uh, advantages, uh, having offense put up at the VRBO's expense?
That doesn't fix the, the number. She is licensed for 12, and she routinely rents. I would say 75% of the time, she rents to 15 to 25 people, and we get that many people, you have noise and, and other issues that go along with it. Um, so she's, she's operating outside her, her license, is what's happening, and she's doing that because if she can rent to 25 people, she's gonna book more weekends. If she's limited to 12, she's made, her booking rate may reduce by 50%.
Okay.
So, I just want her to, I, I don't have any issues with vacation rentals, you guys. I just want her to operate with anyways.
Yeah, I, I, I mean, I understand, I understand the situation, and I guess what I'm gonna tell you is that the board will, uh, will look into this, uh, to see if there's something we can do to establish, uh, that, that they have to live by their rules, that, that was, uh, that they agreed to, and, and so with that, I'm, I'm gonna say, go ahead.
One comment. Chad was here earlier.
Yeah, okay.
And he said he had spoke with you, and he said that he is setting up a meeting with Dave, and I think either Charlie and I are gonna be on there, and a few other people. We've been trying to get something in place, and we've been talking about getting an officer that can do that, so we are working on it, but you need to know it's government, and we move slow.
Okay.
But he did tell me to tell you that.
Okay.
He was here, so I...
Okay, yep, I, I did talk to Chad, yep, so...
He said you talked.
Yep, yep, and, and the rental season's almost over, so if we could have something in place by next May, that'd be fabulous, you guys, 'cause I'm, I'm, I'm tired of watching her, and, and she's getting away with way too much, she is. Okay?
All right, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Yep. Mr. Turner, Veteran Service Officer.
Hello.
Good morning.
Uh, good morning. So, Jerry, you signed that, uh, recommendation letter?
I did.
And, uh, they selected me for the scholarship to go to...
Great, great.
So, uh, according to our rules, I have to have permission from y'all for out-of-state travel, so that's what I'm here for.
Okay, and you, did you tell these guys what that...
No, uh, I haven't spoken to anybody but you about it.
Just, just give us a short rundown of what it...
So, the VFW, uh, as you all know, is a, is a organization that helps with veterans advocacy and, and all that jazz. He, they partnered with Humana to provide 10 scholarships that'll pretty much fully fund, uh, the training for those 10 people that are selected, and it's a nationwide, uh, pool that they pulled from. Um, I was selected, uh, I guess blessed with being selected for, uh, one of those 10 slots, so it's not gonna count, cost the county, uh, hardly anything, uh, to send me on this training, because it's pretty much all gonna be covered by the Humana Scholarship. So, it's five days, um, and actually, the date is wrong on there. I found out after I wrote this, it's actually September 20th through the 25th, so I'll fly out Saturday and then fly back that Thursday, so...
All right, that, that's, uh...
Yep, we gotta get that right on there. Good. Congrats, too.
Thank you. Heck, yeah. So, are there any questions at all? Otherwise, we need a motion.
I, I make a motion to approve the, uh, out-of-state travel for Jacob.
Thank you, Jeff.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, well, give us a rundown when you get back.
Yeah, will do. Thank you, guys.
Yep. Jill.
Good morning. I just have one item today, just looking for a motion to approve bills
Motion to pay the bills.
Thank you, Charlie.
Second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jill. Ricky Doling, Audit or Treasure.
Yeah, good morning, Mr. Chair, and members of the board. I've got, uh, three items. The first is a resolution for a gambling permit. United Way of Douglas and Pope Counties is seeking to perform a raffle, uh, at the Alexandria Shooting Park on September 16th, 2025.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2562 for gambling permit for United Way.
Thank you, Shane.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, the next item is a payment processing agreement. Uh, our former vendor that we use for, uh, processing our online payments for tax payments, miscellaneous purchases like maps, things like that, uh, we are going away from that, um, vendor, and gonna be switching over to CSG Forte Payments Incorporated, um, but it won't take effect till April of next year, as that's when our former contract expires. But we wanna get things in place, um, before then, so we're, so it's seamless, we're ready to go, um, in time for the 2026 tax payment year.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Uh, is this company cheaper, or is it same price?
Yeah, they're gonna give us, um, better, better rates, better rates for our customers.
Okay.
And hopefully, better customer service than what we're getting from our current vendor.
Good.
It's a company that, uh, a lot of other counties throughout the state use, including those that use our CPT tax system, so it should be a seamless process with integrating it with CPT as well, so they come highly recommended.
Well, I will make a motion to approve the payment processing agreement with CSG Forte Payments.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, my final item is, uh, just informational. Uh, every year, on an annual basis, our TIF, um, authorities have to report an annual TIF report to the county, um, and then we incorporate that in our county minutes to prove that it was done, so this is just, um, an informational packet for the minutes to indicate that the, um, following TIF reports were presented from the cities of Alexandria, Brandon, Evansville, Miltonau, Osakis, as well as Douglas County HRE, so everything's in compliance.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All righty, we are at internal requests, and we're starting with Resolution 2563. Board's thoughts.
Well, Mr. Chair, uh, might send him on, in this, I'm seven years now on the board, and I, I feel that we should do like we did last year, take the in, same increase as what the employees get for the nonrepresented ones, and I would say, my opinion, to leave it at $100 on per diem.
Okay, thank you, Tim. Uh, and this is discussion time here, I want, anybody have anything else to say?
I don't disagree with you, Tim, at all, but maybe we can talk, we got some time yet, about the days we have, two or three meetings, maybe, changing it from a per diem to a per meeting type of thing.
Okay.
On a graduating scale, a little bit. Some days, we end up with eight or 10 hours of meetings, and the next time, one meeting only lasts 30 minutes, I get it, but not a per diem, but sometimes, maybe, I'd like us to take a look at that.
Okay, and, and, uh, I will, I would just wanna say this, too, that, uh, we are up against, uh, uh, what I consider a pretty high levy, and, uh, I would be willing to do whatever it takes on our side, too, to, uh...
Hold her down.
To, to hold her down, so, I mean, if everybody wants to play the game, I'm in. I just wanna throw that out there, and I agree with you, Tim. I, 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 we did talk about that, and we did have a, uh, we were gonna take the same, uh, whatever the increase was on an annual basis, that's fine, keep the per diems at 100 bucks, and like I said, right now, with the state mandates that we have been dealing with, we have gotten, I'm gonna say dumped on, with expenses that we didn't used to have to deal with.
Correct.
And so it, it really ha, is having an impact on us in a, in a way that, uh, it, it's a, it's difficult to, uh, to deal with, so, uh, with that, I'm gonna say that, uh, Tim's motion, uh, was that your motion?
I can make a motion, yeah.
Okay, so, I'll second.
Mr. Chair, just to be clear, so you're talking 3% increase for salary and sticking with $100 for per diem?
That is correct.
Well, what, what I am talking about is that the same is what the nonrepresented get, and we haven't done any of that yet.
We, we, we've always looked at 3% as the number, so whatever that number is.
Whatever that number turns, ends up to be, but if you want it solid, I'll just say 3%.
Or?
Or whatever the nonrepresented employees end up with.
Can we do that?
Okay.
All right. So with that, we need a motion, or second, I mean.
Charlie seconded.
Oh, Charlie seconded, okay, thank you, Charlie. Call for, yep, Laney.
Okay, Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I should say Resolution 3563.
Twenty...
Or 2563.
Twenty-five sixty-three, yep.
I'm getting ahead of myself.
Yep.
Twenty-five sixty-three, yes, correct.
All righty, then we move on to, uh, B, Resolution 2564. And that is set county attorney salary.
Make a motion for Resolution 2564, setting the county attorney's salary at 160,000.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, we're moving on to, uh, Resolution 2565, Audit or Treasure Salary Action. Board's wishes.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion, we approve the Audit or, Audit or Treasure salary at 110,2, I don't remember. Resolution 25 dash 65.
65, yep. Thank you, Charlie.
Mr. Chair, I'll second that.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Kalina.
Yes.
Rapp.
Yes.
Wei.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
Schmidt.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, moving on to, uh, 2566, Resolution, County Recorder, Cell Reaction.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to put the Douglas County Recorder's salary, it's a resolution, sorry, 2566, to, um, 90,850.
Thank you, Shane.
Need a second.
Do we need to discuss it a little bit?
She's at 80,850.
Yeah, if we don't get a second, we'll have to drop it and start over here with a number that we can agree on.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion for Resolution 25, what is it, 66?
Uh, 67.
67?
No, 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 you're right, you're right.
2566 of 86,000.
Okay. Okay.
I'll second it.
Thank you, Shane. Any other questions? If not, Lanay, please.
Rapp?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. All right, we're at Resolution 2567, and Sheriff's Salary.
I'll make a motion to approve Resolution 2567 at 175,000.
Thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, we are at 2026 New Positions and Valuations Action.
Mr. Chair, there's six positions for the board's review today. We'll need a motion on each. The first is to eliminate Deputy Auditor Treasurer Slot 3007 that's been unused since June 2023.
Can we ask Vicki, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can we ask Vicki?
I, I would say we should.
I think we should.
Yeah. So Vicki, we got a question for you. This, if this does not get filled. This is your recommendation to? To remove the position? Hasn't been needed. Good, thank you. I'll make that motion then. Okay, thank you, Charlie.
I'll second.
Thank you, Tim. Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Meyer?
Yep.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rapp?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All righty, this is the law enforcement personnel budget. Board's wishes.
Mr. Chair, can we ask, Troy, is this same thing, Troy, filling a position that's open right now? Or you're adding one?
Yeah, come up here, it's easier to hear you.
This would be an additional deputy sheriff position. If we were to receive the position, we would assign this a deputy as an investigator. What we're seeing is a couple things, ICAC, so crimes against children, the investigator would be specifically assigned to investigate those, plus the fraud. What we're, we've seen, you know, an uptick, obviously, over the years with fraud, and so that would be the other area that they would specialize in. But it would be a general investigation position with those two areas being a focus areas. And then what the deputy sheriff position, we'd then backfill that with the additional position.
So this position is already included in your budget?
It is included in the budget proposal, so it is part of budget proposal for 2026.
Yeah, I'll repeat again, one of the issues we're dealing with here is the state mandates that everything has gotten forwarded to the county here, and
No, I under, I understand that.
Yeah, we're, we're just, I don't know where we can just stall things out here for a while, but
And originally, just so you know, originally with the five-year plan that, that we submit, we were, so if you follow that five-year plan, last year we did not submit for deputy sheriff position that was in the plan. This year, we were going to change up our command structure, which would have added two lieutenants' positions, which we saw would be, could be fairly expensive for the year to do. And so at this point, we decided to go with the deputy sheriff position rather than make the change in the command structure that
If, if this person wasn't hired, what would that equate to in overtime for the existing?
Um, that's a tough question to answer, but we, right now, we're, I'm, I'm just looking specifically at fraud. Our investigators are frequently investigating fraud, and of course, a lot of it is over the internet type fraud. And so they're time consuming is what those investigations are. And, and so that's, as far as a specific overtime number, I, I couldn't come up with one right up. I don't want to be inaccurate.
Yeah, and, and, you know, he, here's one of the things that bothers me anyway, and that is these people that do fraud over the computer, and they don't get caught.
That's what our hopes are, to catch more.
I know, it just seems like we, they, they, you know, they're out of country, or they're someplace where we can't touch them. And, and that really, I mean, that bothers me that we can't get these people and make them pay account, be accountable for this, because it's, fraud is, is out of control, especially, I've read this, and I was at that meeting there at the Catholic Church about fraud and senior citizens, and, and it's, it's a big deal. It is a big deal.
It is. It, it affects everybody.
Yeah, so.
And it's not just the senior population anymore. They're, they target everybody, but young people and old people are the, older people are the two primary targets.
I, I know. Again, I would say this, you know, if there was some way of knowing how much money this position would save somebody from being frauded out of money.
You know, and I can only compare it to our, our other fraud position, which is for people that are receiving benefits that should not be receiving benefits through social services. It's a partnership with social services, and that position, in a year's time, can bring back, or at least prevent, over $300,000 in, in fraudulent, in, in that case, people receiving benefits are not entitled to.
So, I mean, there's a trade-off there.
And this one, I mean, you know, I, I can look at recent cases where, and sometimes we're working with the city police, sometimes we're working on our own, but the hopes are to prevent, that we can find out about it soon enough to prevent it, because like you mentioned, Commissioner, so many of these crimes are hard to track because they end up outside the United States. And so the goal is to get at them before that money is transferred. And so how much we can save people, I'm, I'm not sure. I'm hoping that it's a lot of money that we're able to either recover or prevent.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I got a question. So would this deputy be a road deputy, too, besides doing this?
This position, as far as this position, it would backfill, because for a person to fill the investigator's role that I'm talking about, it would, we'd want an experienced deputy there. So this would be a backfill for moving somebody into that investigative role.
Okay.
Board's wishes. I, I, like I said, I don't know. We've got a tight budget.
And it
I don't know.
I believe there's one more position for me. And we might as, that way, we might as well talk about both of them.
Yes, yes.
It's a financial commitment here, as far as approving the position. So this jail finance position, what this is, is we feel that if we have the jail finance position, we can efficiently recover more money than primarily what inmates owe us. So recovery on, on, I'll just call it pay to stay, and then also medical expenses. So once an inmate is sentenced, in the state of Minnesota, state statute says that we can charge them for their stay, plus we can recoup medical expenses. And so this position, which currently we work with Jill's office, would dedicate an employee specifically to that, where they're, without getting too deep into the weeds, there's a lot of different cash flow that comes through the jail. Right now, we have probably five employees, five different employees that are at some level involved with finance within the jail and touching cash. And, and the fewer people that do those things, the, the better it is. And so this position would take care of all the finance responsibilities within the jail. I would hope that by being able to be efficient at recovering the money that's still out there, we would be able to pay for this position, plus. But it's difficult to predict that, and one of the things is, once you get really efficient at it, at some point, you might not be, have the, as much of a need, but it would be a person solely dedicated to the finance responsibilities of the jail.
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Say, Troy, how, some of these people, obviously, you're not going to get any money, it really doesn't matter. It's like, you get bought out of a turnip. So if we're going to just be chasing dollars, is it really going to benefit us? If we're just chasing them and never going to get them?
There's a number of ways to recover money, though, and, and you're right, there are some that just are going to get written off.
They'll disappear.
What we're hoping is that fewer will get written off than currently are, because that person, that will, would be their sole responsibility is to chase, literally chase that money at times. And so it can be money, revenue recapture, we can get it through tax returns, and other means, judgments. Currently, at this time, it's, because it's, it is time consuming, so.
I bet it is.
So to get a judgment against somebody who owes us money, it's court process, and then a person is able to garnish wages also. But you are right, Commissioner, there are, there are certain people will never be able to recover money from.
So Troy, I have to ask you, out of these two, which one is the most important to you?
Of course, I wouldn't request either if I didn't think they were important. But if I, if you, I think that the jail finance position would be where I, if I had to prioritize one over the other, that would be the position right now. And it would be helpful to have that position. Just, it's, we've been, we've asked for the position a long time ago, then we worked with, with Central Finance, and, and we just feel that for efficiency, if we had a person assigned full-time to that role, it would help us recover some of the money that's out there.
I just got another question, Mr. Chair, is our staff that we have present are not spending enough time on it, or with Jill and her staff and other people that you might have?
I, I, I mean, I'll say this, everyone who's involved in it right now is putting 100% effort into it, it's just a time issue. And so, and Jill could speak to it, too, it's difficult when somebody can't be 100% devoted to this position. And if, if there's changes in personnel, then basically, we end up retraining the person for the position. And so right now, I, like I say, I have at least five employees who are involved in certain aspects of, of money, whether it's physically taking cash out of our cash boxes, which, that sounds worse than it is. Cash boxes are for bail money, money that inmates come in with, plus the revenue recapture and, and the other part, financial responsibilities.
I got a question now. So if you did get this person, Central Finance wouldn't have to do any of the work over there that they're doing now?
It would alleviate them from having to assign a person or persons to that role. It would put that person into the sheriff's office, and, and now, and not that they wouldn't be working with Central Finance, but it would take away from Central Finance having to provide that person.
Because I know Central Finance is a little short right now.
They work hard at Central Finance, and that's, that's part of the, the problem is there are so many responsibilities in, for Central Finance, for the entire county, that this, I believe, could improve the efficiencies of having a person specifically assigned to this.
I got one more question.
All right, then we got to wind her up.
Yep. This person's going to work on this 40 hours a day, 52 week, I mean, 40 hours a week, 52 weeks, he's going to, or you got other things he's going to do, because that seems like that could be a lot.
You know, and, and right now, there's 40 hours worth of work, but that's where I was saying, if in the future, we see that, okay, now we have actually eliminated the problem, or at least reduced the problem, then we can look at different ways to approach that. But right now, it's, it's, we feel it's needed to help recover those funds that are out there.
Well, board's wishes here, I, I, like I said, we've, we've got a difficult decision to do. You guys do a great job, it's got nothing to do with that, it's just that we have to get something, cut someplace or we're going to be in a
Oh, I, I understand.
So my, my motion would be to go ahead and approve the one that we got on the screen here. And, and that would be it for now.
We, we probably would have to make a motion to deny the deputy sheriff slot, number 126.
Okay, we can do it separately.
Motion on this one.
Yeah, we can do it either way, I bet this one was first on the list. But that's fine.
So that would be my
So you made a motion to do the finance one?
Yes.
Got it. I'll second that.
Any other questions? Lanay, please.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
No.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to deny the deputy sheriff tentative slot one twenty-six.
All right, thank you, Shane. Second, I'll second that. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Troy.
Thank you. And just so I'm clear, the finance position is approved, the deputy position is denied.
Counsel, correct.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Like I said, I, it's just one of those things, we're in a, in between a rock and a hard place here right now.
I understand.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And with that, we're going to take a five-minute break and return.
We got some more.
Oh, I thought there was one done there.
No, we got.
Two more yet.
Oh, my mistake. All righty.
The building maintenance personnel guy.
All righty. I didn't see that. All right. Okay, board's wishes.
I will make a motion to approve the elimination of one housekeeper, slot four zero one six, and one building maintenance, two positions, slot four zero one six.
Thank you, Tim.
Second.
Thank you, Charlie. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Just for the record, Rod, you said that doesn't need the positions are being taken care of. So.
Okay.
The jobs are being done, so.
All righty, social services, personnel budget.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Yes.
Uh, as you will see, uh, regarding our personnel budget, we have, uh, really tried hard to assess our staffing needs over the last year, um, and to make use of the positions that we have. So, uh, we, at this time, are proposing to remove a social work position. That position, uh, was vacated this last year by a forty-year retirement. Um, and we have subsequently ended, uh, the interagency agreement that we had with Horizon Public Health to perform in choices assessment. So that position is no longer needed. We also have, uh, two child support positions that have, um, both been vacated at different times, and we've opted not to refill based on the specific needs of the caseloads and, uh, fluidity within the team. And so we are identifying that those positions are not needed at this time. The addition that we have is the request of a social services case aide. A case aide, uh, does really important work to support the mandate that we have within our office. Um, and they can do it at a much more cost-effective way. We have much better luck recruiting case aides than we do social work staff. Um, and the additional documentation requirements for transporting, uh, some of those additional needs that continue to increase by state mandates are able to be accomplished, uh, through the utilization of a case aide, which we, uh, clearly identify as a much more cost-effective option for our agency. So we're requesting to eliminate those three positions and have the addition of a case aide.
Thank you. Tabitha, I'll make a motion to do just what Tabitha said.
All right. Thank you, Charlie.
A second.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other questions? Laney, please.
Way?
Yes.
Meyer?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
Yes.
Rap?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Tabitha.
Thank you.
Okay. No?
Nope.
One more.
One more. I don't, I, I, that, Jakes Turner.
Jakes, yeah.
Come on up, Jake.
Add to the eighty, the point eighty.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
So, uh, yeah, we're just bringing this back, um, asking for my, uh, office assistant to go full-time, thirty-seven and a half hours, and, uh, bump up to a grade four.
Question. Jake, did you have this in your budget?
Yep, that's in the proposed budget for twenty twenty-six.
And the cost is thirty-six thousand, three hundred and seventy-four dollars.
Yep, and that includes all benefits too. So that's not just pay, that's all benefits as well.
So would this be a thirty-seven and a half hour work week?
Correct. Right now, she currently works a thirty-hour work week.
Okay.
Well, that's what she's slaughtered for. She's actually working more than that.
So we are paying some overtime?
No, I've been able to keep it under overtime at this time, but it's starting to creep up there, so.
Those roughly three thousand dollars a month more?
Say that again?
Three thousand dollars a month more for this?
Yeah.
Going?
Not for pay. Like I said, that includes benefits as well.
Okay, okay, okay.
So it's, yeah, it's not three thousand dollars for pay. It's, that's including like medical insurance and all that jazz. Yeah.
Board's wishes. Well, we're in a crunch, I tell you that.
What do you want to do, Gary? Hold static?
Mr. Chair, the thing I, I don't like is if we're going to add hours for somebody and cut for somebody else.
I know that. I know that. I get it. And that's, and again, you know, the veterans are, I mean, I'm a veteran. I, I just that, right now, until we get this thing established where we're going to have for our levy, we, if we add, we're going to be in trouble. I mean, we're just that simple. If we add, we're going to be in trouble. I, I, and I, I mean. Yeah. That's, that's where it's at. Board's thoughts?
Been, been looking for one, but I'll make a motion to deny.
Yeah, I, I'm going to second it. I just, and it's, it's just because we're in, uh, in a situation here where we, uh, we, we gotta, we gotta hold the budget, so.
Mr. Chair, we do need to take care of our veterans, though.
I understand. God, I understand. I understand.
You know, what are we going to do? You know, we're seeing the increase of the services for the veterans and, and what are we going to do to better serve the needs of our county with these new veterans that are coming in? And I'm, I'm assuming that we're seeing an increase of services for our veterans, are we?
There's, well, yes. Um, and then one thing that I've noticed lately is there's more, uh, younger veterans that are starting to check into their benefits as well. So just in the past two weeks, I've had a handful of guys from the eighties and early nineties coming into the office that I've never met before. So.
And how many are in your office right now?
Staff-wise?
Yes.
The three, but one of them is thirty hours. So. I don't mean to be a stickler on the rules, though. You have a motion and a second on the floor. So if you guys deny it, that's fine. You guys are the boss. I'm just here to, you know, tell you what the office needs. But if you tell me we can't afford it right now, that's fine. We can, we can make it work with what we have, and then I'll bring that back next year.
All right. Laney?
Meyer?
Yeah.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Kalina?
No.
Rap?
Yes.
Way?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah. That's for two years, with a proposed reduction of 50% in 2027, 2028. Now, I put a little caveat here. You'll see that note, because when we talk AIS, there's a number of different buckets at the state level. The three-year boat registration, while it increases the dollar amount for AIS, it's for control grants. It does not go to prevention aid. So I just wanted to call that out. Next slide, please. This is, I think, probably the most important slide, because here's where we talk revenue. You know, as I'm listening to the tight budgets, when we think about the impact that our natural resource, our lakes, have on this community, we can draw a line to revenue received. So I reached out to the Alexandria Economic Development Commission, and they pointed me to a recent study by the state of Minnesota. And within there was a section on outdoor recreation. Now, we know that outdoor recreation could include more than water sports, but if you look at the majority of outdoor recreation that happens in our county, it is attributable to our lakes. And that state report showed that there are 841 jobs supported by outdoor recreation. I think that's light. I think when you start looking at hospitality and other businesses that benefit from visitors and tourism, I'm, I'm thinking that could go up a little, but that's what the state report said. They also had a dollar amount, value add, to outdoor recreation of over $108 million with the economic output in our county alone of almost $200 million. Chad, Chad talked to, do you want to talk about the assessment?
Yeah, I'm, I received raw data from the Auditor and Assessor's Office and have tabulated it. And actually, you can see the 2025 tax parcels on water, on the water in Douglas County pay 41% of the tax in Douglas County. For taxes payable in 2026, the value is 46% of the value in Douglas County. Now, that, that's including commercial, industrial, and whatever. And the, the knowledge I've gained on this, obviously, Douglas County bought my company about five, six or seven years ago. I worked with Charlie Meyer on it, and so I have quite a bit of background in this. So I've tabulated this information. So you really look at what the lakes, what does Douglas County benefit from the lakes? And I know I have a lot of lake people that complain about their value, but at the same time, the lakes is the biggest asset to Douglas County. When you're talking 300 lakes, we need to maintain those lakes to keep them clean, clear, and obviously, we want people to not have a problem paying $1 million for a place on the lake. Consequently, you look at what taxes are generated in Douglas County off of lakes, it definitely helps the residential people in Alec and other communities that are not on the lake to offset what you people need to run the county successfully.
Thank you, Chad. Next slide, please. So let's talk about lake associations, because lake associations are doing what they can with the monies that they receive to manage our lakes, whether it be stocking wall ice in Lake Miltonau to fighting curly-leaf pond weed on Lake Irene. Lake associations generate their revenues through memberships paid for by lakeshore property owners. They do fundraising. Just last week, Miltonau had their fundraiser out at Leaf Valley, and they take and accept donations from our local businesses. Lake associations are able to benefit financially from services that are provided by the state AIS Prevention Aid Fund. Dave Rush and Justin Swart have done a great job in seeing that lakes are surveyed in, in search of invasive species, and also it supports decontamination efforts at public accesses. We receive benefit, as far as lake associations receive benefit from the DNR with regard to AIS management. And then also, there is the Water Quality Legacy Fund here in Douglas County. Now, that, and again, a little caveat below that, that fund, that bucket supports opportunities for water quality improvement. Just want to note that that does not support AIS prevention. That's a different bucket, a different fund. Want to point out in that upper right-hand corner, you know, we all got, got quite nervous, I think, when we heard of a little thing called signal crayfish. And I want to thank the county for having a contingency fund. Unfortunately, those dollars were depleted, and identifying and mitigating any concerns with signal crayfish. And down below, we are not, I want to also point out, we are not advocating for any other alternative funding options, but I want to just note that here. How would a lake association raise money? Well, it would be the creation of a lake improvement district through local tax dollars, potentially license fees, or who knows, whatever creative ideas we would have. So, thank you. Next slide, please. So in summary, we again are not here to ask for money. We are here to tee up future discussion when forecasting. Our purpose here has been to educate and inform and let you know what has been happening at the state level. But more importantly, this is collaborative. We are here, this is a collaborative community, and we want to continue to build that relationship and support our approach for dealing with invasive species by educating prevention and management, and then collectively working together to find solutions to support some sustainable funding, to maintain our most valuable asset. Next slide, please. Couple of slides here, just in the appendix. This one actually came from the state senate this last session, when they were talking about the AIS Prevention Aid Fund. And if you see here, if you look at that graph, that arrow, it, that upward arrow, that's when the $10 million was appropriated in the state. You'll see that trend line is going up. AIS was spreading at, across the state into different lakes. Once those dollars were applied and interventions were put into place, it bent the trend. You start seeing that downward trend, so there's a direct correlation in that funding to AIS. Next slide, please. Just want to finish with this. This is Lake Irene, and if you were on Irene before they started treating curly-leaf pond weed, which is an aquatic invasive species plant, this is what it looked like in June of 2020. So getting ahead of this, I think is very, very important for all of our lakes, you know, because it certainly not only saves dollars in the long run, but our lakes do generate revenue, and they are what are supporting this community. Thank you. Questions?
All righty, I, I just make it quick here, but I, I guess I was reading an article about Lake Minnetonka, and they put out a petition to stop using chemical treatment on the weeds down there. And their, their comment was that the loons, and the baby loons can't read that information that says don't swim in here for seven days or 10 days or drink this water. And, and so they have noticed that it is not friendly to wildlife. And, and so that, that's something I think we have to keep in mind here, too, when, when using chemicals. And I think that when we use chemicals, it doesn't only kill the bad weeds, it does kill the good weeds, too.
And I would bring in, Jerry, happy to have further discussion with you on that with Lake Irene, because you can see distinctly the results is in more of the native plants that have come back, and there's quite a bit of science to substantiate the treatments that they've been doing. I will tell you, having lived in the Twin Cities, Lake Minnetonka is at a different place than we are, and when I see what happens legislatively, it concerns me, because now I see a rural metro divide. Lake Minnetonka, the first invasive species of Eurasian water millifoot, showed up in 1990, 1991. They made a big mistake. They came in with harvesters, and they harvested in Minnetonka, and it spread it. That's just like when you go out and you're harvesting in the, in the fields, they spread that plant all through that lake. And so Minnetonka got behind the eight ball very early. We're out here, and that continuum, where Minnetonka is down here, we're up here. We have three lakes in our county that have no invasive species. Vermont is a little jewel in this county, and we want to keep it that way and stay on this end of the continuum and not let this get away from us like Minnetonka did. So you're looking at a little bit of apples and oranges with Minnetonka, because they've, they have made some decisions early on that we can learn from to try to avoid their mistakes.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
You know, of this 250,000, it's kind of interesting how they arrived at that for Douglas County. It's based on public accesses and the number of parking spots you have at your accesses. Now, doesn't that sound like something the government would come up with? I mean, why would that happen? But at the same time, we're, we're actually pushing for preventative. And when you talk about Minnetonka and what Janet said, Janet said, they let it get totally out of control. And at the present time, I believe Justin Schwartz and his group actually did 11 surveys of our lakes this year, and that 250,000 is used to do those surveys. And so we're concerned if that gets cut in half, we need to possibly generate in three to four years some additional dollars to supplement or bring that, that, those dollars back in place. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jay Seeling, you're next.
Thank you, Chad. Next slide, please. So let's talk about lake associations, because lake associations are doing what they can with the monies that they receive to manage our lakes, whether it be stocking walleyes in Lake Miltonau to fighting curly-leaf pond weed on Lake Irene. Lake associations generate their revenues through memberships paid for by lakeshore property owners. They do fundraising. Just last week, Miltonau had their fundraiser out at Leaf Valley, and they take and accept donations from our local businesses. Lake associations are able to benefit financially from services that are provided by the state AIS Prevention Aid Fund. Dave Rush and Justin Swart have done a great job in seeing that lakes are surveyed in, in search of invasive species, and also it supports decontamination efforts at public accesses. We receive benefit, as far as lake associations receive benefit from the DNR with regard to AIS management. And then also, there is the Water Quality Legacy Fund here in Douglas County. Now, that, and again, a little caveat below that, that fund, that bucket supports opportunities for water quality improvement. Just want to note that that does not support AIS prevention. That's a different bucket, a different fund. Want to point out in that upper right-hand corner, you know, we all got, got quite nervous, I think, when we heard of a little thing called signal crayfish, and I want to thank the county for having a contingency fund. Unfortunately, those dollars were depleted, and identifying and mitigating any concerns with signal crayfish. And down below, we are not, I want to also point out, we are not advocating for any other alternative funding options, but I want to just note that here. How would a lake association raise money? Well, it would be the creation of a lake improvement district through local tax dollars, potentially license fees, or who knows, whatever creative ideas we would have. So, thank you. Next slide, please. So in summary, we again are not here to ask for money. We are here to tee up future discussion when forecasting. Our purpose here has been to educate and inform and let you know what has been happening at the state level. But more importantly, this is collaborative. We are here, this is a collaborative community, and we want to continue to build that relationship and support our approach for dealing with invasive species by educating prevention and management, and then collectively working together to find solutions to support some sustainable funding, to maintain our most valuable asset. Next slide, please. Couple of slides here, just in the appendix. This one actually came from the state senate this last session, when they were talking about the AIS Prevention Aid Fund. And if you see here, if you look at that graph, that arrow, it, that upward arrow, that's when the $10 million was appropriated in the state. You'll see that trend line is going up. AIS was spreading at, across the state into different lakes. Once those dollars were applied and interventions were put into place, it bent the trend. You start seeing that downward trend, so there's a direct correlation in that funding to AIS. Next slide, please. Just want to finish with this. This is Lake Irene, and if you were on Irene before they started treating curly-leaf pond weed, which is an aquatic invasive species plant, this is what it looked like in June of 2020. So getting ahead of this, I think is very, very important for all of our lakes, you know, because it certainly not only saves dollars in the long run, but our lakes do generate revenue, and they are what are supporting this community. Thank you. Questions?
All righty, I, I just make it quick here, but I, I guess I was reading an article about Lake Minnetonka, and they put out a petition to stop using chemical treatment on the weeds down there. And their, their comment was that the loons, and the baby loons can't read that information that says don't swim in here for seven days or 10 days or drink this water. And, and so they have noticed that it is not friendly to wildlife, and, and so that, that's something I think we have to keep in mind here, too, when, when using chemicals. And I think that when we use chemicals, it doesn't only kill the bad weeds, it does kill the good weeds, too.
And I would bring in, Jerry, happy to have further discussion with you on that with Lake Irene, because you can see distinctly the results is in more of the native plants that have come back, and there's quite a bit of science to substantiate the treatments that they've been doing. I will tell you, having lived in the Twin Cities, Lake Minnetonka is at a different place than we are, and when I see what happens legislatively, it concerns me, because now I see a rural metro divide. Lake Minnetonka, the first invasive species of Eurasian water millifoot, showed up in 1990, 1991. They made a big mistake. They came in with harvesters, and they harvested in Minnetonka, and it spread it. That's just like when you go out and you're harvesting in the, in the fields, they spread that plant all through that lake. And so Minnetonka got behind the eight ball very early. We're out here, and that continuum, where Minnetonka is down here, we're up here. We have three lakes in our county that have no invasive species. Vermont is a little jewel in this county, and we want to keep it that way and stay on this end of the continuum and not let this get away from us like Minnetonka did. So you're looking at a little bit of apples and oranges with Minnetonka, because they've, they have made some decisions early on that we can learn from to try to avoid their mistakes.
All right, all right. Thank you.
Yep, you're welcome.
You know, of this 250,000, it's kind of interesting how they arrived at that for Douglas County. It's based on public accesses and the number of parking spots you have at your accesses. Now, doesn't that sound like something the government would come up with? I mean, why would that happen? But at the same time, we're, we're actually pushing for preventative. And when you talk about Minnetonka and what Janet said, Janet said, they let it get totally out of control. And at the present time, I believe Justin Schwartz and his group actually did 11 surveys of our lakes this year, and that 250,000 is used to do those surveys. And so we're concerned if that gets cut in half, we need to possibly generate in three to four years some additional dollars to supplement or bring that, that, those dollars back in place. All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. Jay Seeling, you're next.
Good morning, commissioners, and thank you. I could make this really brief and get back on track if you just say yes. But I want to emphasize again the importance of our lakes, as you just heard and saw a lot of the data and the economic impact of it. 300 lakes were known for our clean water, four major watersheds. There's actually a fifth that just barely touches Douglas County. This all makes water quality a very complex and important, important issue. We enjoy our lakes and streams for boating, fishing, and swimming. We appreciate lakes, streams, and wetlands for providing critical wildlife habitat, wildlife viewing, and our local water resources are an economic driver, providing direct and indirect business opportunities. Alexandria area is voted one of Minnesota's best for summer and winter fun events and as a fishing destination. So we want to keep our water clean for our permanent and seasonal residents, annual visitors, future generations. Right now, almost every lake in Douglas County is listed on the impaired waters list. I was just going through that again this morning. Most of them are because of the mercury levels. It is a, the MPC puts on a impaired list for mercury levels in fish, but we've also have several lakes in Douglas County that are in the impaired waters list because of nutrients. Lake Carlos is on our infamous chain. It currently has a B grade. The Minnesota DNR has taken all of our, our lakes over the last five years and given them grade levels. You might have seen an article in the Minneapolis, or in the Star Tribune on Sunday that profiled the worst lake in Minnesota down by Wyndham, Worthington, Lake Ochita. It has got an F-minus grade. It is the absolutely worst lake. Our lakes in Douglas County, as I said, Carlos has a B. The rest of the chain has C-plus, so we're pretty average, but we like to think we're above average with our, our area. And we've got our city chain of lakes, Winona, Agnes, and Henry, that are D and D-plus on that lake report health card. There are no lakes in Douglas County with that A grade, and there's only a handful of B grades. So we can and we need to do better. We need to improve and maintain our water quality, and that is the vital, it is vital to protect our most precious resource. So the Douglas County Water Quality Legacy Fund was established as a component fund of West Central Initiative. The goal is to provide required matching dollars for grants available from other sources to protect and restore our natural resources. The component fund provides a sustainable source of funding to restore and keep our waters healthy for generations to come. Without these matching grants, a lot of the funds to do water quality improvement projects, we wouldn't be able to pursue them. A, a big part of pursuing the grants for these projects is the availability of those matching funds, and that was the whole purpose of bringing this fund about. Since its inception, we have provided almost three mil, almost $300,000 in matching grants, and that's funded about $2.5 million in projects. It's very vital to keep this fund healthy, because we have some future projects. The most recent one that was just approved is a, a gully protection project on Lake Victoria. We'll be providing 12.5% of matching funds for that, up to $9,000. There is also a pending request through Fish and Wildlife Service to do some wetland restore, restoration on a 20-acre parcel. As part of a 95-acre grassland easement, there's 20 acres that are going to be... There's 20 acres that are going to be ceded to prairie, and then there's a restoration of four wetlands. That initial ask is about 7,500. And then there are other projects that we anticipate with TMDL or Total Maximum Daily Load requirements for lakes Henry, Agnes, and Winona. Smith Lake and Stow Lake have also had some projects pending. Stow had a $300,000 project pending that did not get funded. They'll try to fund that again. Some of these projects come, as I said, through Fish and Wildlife Service, some through Soil and Water Conservation District. But we anticipate an increase, especially with these TMDL projects in the city lakes, that there could be more residential requests for matching funds to make projects that will improve water quality. So again, I thank you for the support that Douglas County has given. Included a statement of our activities from the West Central Initiative. We have received money from the Douglas County Lakes Association. The $90,000 contribution to government grants, that was the money that came from the aggregate Douglas County Fund last year, and then corporate contributions of $10,000 that was given from the Larson Trust. Those monies then are held at West Central Initiative and invested, and then we appropriate those matching funds. Last year, our biggest expense was 140,000, almost $141,000 for the ditch 23 project, as you recall. And we use that bulk of money we had in reserve with the Land and Resource Management that came directly from the Douglas County appropriation. So as we spent that down, we maintained the larger fund in West Central, which is invested in Wells Fargo and the Vanguard Fund. And that fund increase, I put a couple of the monthlies up here, so you can see that that investment activity has paid off and is increasing. So if we can hold that, the idea is to use this as an endowment and then utilize county appropriations to be able to be nimble in responding to other grant requests, such as this project on Lake Victoria, Fish and Wildlife projects. And so again, this year, we would ask you and for that funding appropriation to maintain at $50,000. And I'm open to any questions.
Board, have any questions? You know, I guess one thing I'm just going to mention, and I know I harp on this a lot, but when it comes to Lake Henry and where the ALSD dumps into their discharge, you know, we have been promoting that anybody that's hooked up to the ALSD, that their water softer be discharged onsite and not go down to the ALSD.
Yep.
And I've talked to Mr. Gilbertson out there about that. He wasn't against it, but I think you guys that need to also get involved in that, if we're going to continue to do what we're doing out here, we're fighting a losing battle.
You're absolutely right, Commissioner Rapp. And the ALSD chloride situation is one, I can foresee future kinds of projects that this fund can help with, providing matching grants for other grant opportunities to alleviate chloride. There's also the county ditches running into Lake Osakis. There's a big project going on there. That's going to result in some opportunities for water quality improvement projects. They're spending a lot of money right now on analysis, but pending, after that analysis is going to come suggestions for projects, and then those projects will have to be funded. And a big part of those fundings comes from local matching grants, and that's what you guys will graciously provide, and I really appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board's wishes. Anything, any questions? Okay. Thank you, Jay. All righty, Heather Pender.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and members. My name is Heather Pender. I'm the Director with Dancing Sky Area Agency on Aging. We cover 21 counties in Northwest Minnesota, and we operate under the auspices of the Northwest Regional Development Commission in Warren. So we have a brick and mortar office in Warren, and then most of our aging staff are spread strategically throughout our 21 counties. We have two staff residing in Douglas County, one that works with program development and another who works on the Senior Linkage Line. So primarily, when I think of our work, we are divided into two categories. The Senior Linkage Line, which is a statewide service that provides a variety of different services to older adults and caregivers. One of them is the 1-800 number, so folks can call the 800 number and get connected to services and resources locally in their community. We also have the Return to Community Service. That is a service that directly connects with a consumer and helps them either stay in the community, so their own home, or, you know, dwelling of that nature in a community setting, and/or if they're discharging from a care facility and going back to a community setting with the goal and the hope of delaying a Medicaid spend down. There's also the pre-admission screening, so a screening that happens before someone enters a care facility. So that's primarily the work of the Senior Linkage Line. Through the Return to Community Service, 149 folks in Douglas County had contact with us in 2024, and roughly 800, and so had contact through the phone line for 2024. The other part of our work is administering the Older Americans Act funds. So those are funds that are federal funds dedicated to the area agencies on aging through an interstate funding formula, which is something that the state decides, and that's how we get our allocation. And then we administer those funds out to local grantees. So that is things like senior nutrition, so both congregate and home-delivered meals. There's a bucket of funding for things like chore, homemaker, Title III E is caregiver, and then we have Title III D, which is evidenced-based classes. So for 2026, we're asking for $9,534. That goes to match the Older Americans Act funding and our distribution of those funds. I want to pause for any questions?
Okay, any comments from the board? Okay, go proceed.
So our work with the Older Americans Act, as I mentioned, that is re-granting those funds out to local providers, and then they're reporting to us, units, person served, that type of work. So a lot of the Older Americans Act funds, because our area agency on aging does not do direct service like some states, those funds are directly, go back into the various counties. One project I want to highlight as we look for opportunities to take on additional projects during the year in various different capacities, we do do some work with, potentially, someone will come to us with a special project that they'd like our help on, so we are working for a needs assessment in some northern counties right now. So we'll take on a small project, help for a few months. There was also an attachment that I sent with our RAPS project. This was a special grant with American Rescue Plan funds, so they're very time-limited. We are working on a no-cost extension through the end of September. With the pilot program, we worked with a few other AAAs in the state to develop a tracking system called Cumulus. So it's an actual software system where we are having a closed-loop communication with the adult protection teams that wanted to participate with us. So in the report, you see 15 out of the 21-county APS providers are partnering with us on this project. And the uniqueness of it is if the county identifies someone who has a need for something that the county might not be able to pay for, we had direct service funds to help with home cleanouts. We helped support moving a couple of folks that were in dangerous situations. So then our team, the county referred to us, and then our team would help kind of that short, very time-limited implementation of, you know, dispatching services and funds to reduce or mitigate their risk of maltreatment. And then cases were closed on our end, kind of in tandem with the county usually, not, that wasn't always the case, but working through that. So this was an exciting project to be a part of. I'm anxious to hear some of the end results, but the report you have has data through June 10th, and we had 22 folks in Douglas County and roughly $16,000 that went back to folks in need in Douglas County.
All righty. Any questions? No? Good information.
Thank you, everyone. We appreciate your support.
You bet. Thank you. And next is Shelley K. Foster with the Alexandria Senior Center.
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I have with me here today Jan Matoney, and she is our board treasurer, so I'm glad to have her here today.
Go ahead and give us.
All right, well, I thought I would put it into our PowerPoint, just all the different, I can probably get through it more quickly just doing that. There we go. Okay, so our Alexandria Senior Center, we've been around for 41 years, and we rely on our volunteers, we do lots of our activities, as you can see here. What we really wanted to tell you about today is some of the new things that are happening in the, at the Alexandria Senior Center. So what's new? We have revised our mission, and that's to support active living for older adults through social, educational, and creative connections. And we crafted a purpose, and that is to empower healthy minds and bodies. And we've looked, really dove into what are our values. And so in some really good working sessions, we came up with commitment, community, and compassion. And we really strive to be the hub of activity for aging adults in Douglas County. So what's certain? What's certain is that we have members and guests that participate in our programs from all over Douglas County, from every corner. So just want to make a point of that, that sometimes our name is, because of our name, Alexandria Senior Center, people think it's just for Alexandria residents. It isn't. In fact, our board president is from Miltonau. We have members from Evansville and all over Douglas County. So in our, for our data, I want to just demonstrate our impact. We have 670 members. However, we have foot traffic of about 1,200 each month. In fact, last Friday, we had over 100 people in and out of our doors at the Alexandria Senior Center, participating in, from cards to a birthday club to a foot care. Our volunteers are very important. Commissioner Schmidt, you got to meet CJ at the county fair, and she was recognized as Volunteer of the Year, and she puts in 30 hours a week doing our IT, marketing, training our volunteers at the front desk. So we really maximize on our volunteer, volunteers and their service. Meals on Wheels, 140 a day that go out. Also, we know that the need is there. We have, in Douglas County, the seniors are now over 30%, people over 60 in our county. Right now, we're operating with 1.75 FTE. We have lots of fundraisers led by volunteers and lots of great events. So just want to just give you a highlight of some of the programs and activities that we're doing, and I won't go through all of them, but I just want to highlight some of our new ones. Yoga and chair massage is booked three months out. We have some great history tours that are going on with Rachel Bartelson. So we're just trying to keep things fresh and engaging for our seniors, getting to keep them living independently. Some program highlights. Thank you. We've been partnering with many people in the community, such as the Douglas County Library with Luke, and keeping our seniors up on technology, Safety for Seniors with Julie Anderson, and keeping them learning, learning more about scams, and large, this year was on large weather events and how to be safe. And here's our nurse, that she works on foot care. And that's a really valuable service that we are, the Senior Center is providing for our seniors, who, once you get older, sometimes you can't reach your feet, and it can cause a lot of problems, especially for diabetics, if you don't take good care of your feet. Next one. We have lots of educational workshops because we can partner with the great community of Alexandria. We, with many of our healthcare providers, we've been doing heart health, we've been doing things on vertigo, prevention of falls, balance, so all the things that we believe will help keep our seniors healthy, vibrant, and living independently, and keeping them not dependent on other social services. So here are some of our creative connections. I just want to point out a couple of things on our Meals on Wheels. Janet Baker and her crew over there, they've, they have prepared and delivered over 32,000 meals this last year. That was in 2024. We partnered with Discovery Middle School, they have caring, and they helped us to really clean out our gardens and do some of that physical work that's hard for us to do. Our Fix-It Clinic has been very successful in getting our very handy men that are helping people to fix their clocks and small appliances to keep their homes operating well. And our Sunday music is something that's really a beautiful thing to come and watch, couples sashay across the stage, across the floor, and you can just, you know, feel how they feel in their youth, feeling their youth again.
Shelley, I got a question.
Yes.
When it comes to Meals on Wheels, do you see that pretty steady from month to month, or is it up and down with the seasons?
It's been pretty steady, about 140. Now, our shared meals is on Thursday, and that's been about 20 people that come in to have a meal at the Senior Center.
Okay.
So that's, our goal is to keep people active and healthy, so I just have a few snapshots here from the Senior Center to show some great activity. And Jan's in our library there, demonstrating that, and you probably recognize some of the faces here. So the next slide. So what's the future? We've been talking about a new facility at the Y, and that's moving forward. So that's a great collaboration to keep a unified vision for youth and seniors to be in one location. We are looking at a new name, so we've been working hard to come up with a new name, to broaden our scope, to serve more older adults, and maybe attract a younger adults, too, newly-retired. So we're going to continue to work on that brand, and we'll be launching that soon, but we're not, we're still working on that launch. Here's our budget, as we are requesting the same as last year, 20,000. It's really vital dollars to help keep our program coordinator able to be there and doing the coordinating and scheduling of all of our activities and our volunteers and our building. So as you know, we do own and manage a 9,000-square-foot building that constantly has repairs. Last week, it was the water heater for 4,000. So it's really vital funding for us to help keep the center going and functioning at the capacity that it is right now. Next slide. So just want to thank you for this opportunity to present today, and this, the request for $20,000 will really help us to help the county serve our growing and aging older adults. Open to any questions?
All right. Board, any questions? No? Thank you. Yep, very good. All right, Brenda Bitten, Director of Rainbow Rider.
Good morning, board. Thank you for having me. I'm Brenda, the Director of Rainbow Rider. So for 2026, we have submitted a budget request to MINDA for $4.7 million. And of that, Rainbow Rider is required to meet a 10% local share. And of that 10% local share... And of that 10% local share, we are asking our participating counties to provide 5%. So for Douglas County, that is 142,042.55. We are also, or we also submitted a request for six Class 400 vehicle replacements. We've typically only been doing two these past few years because of the cost. But 2026 is the last year that MINDOT will only be asking us for a 10% local share. After this, they'll be going up to 20%. So we have six buses that qualify, so we threw them all in the pot to see if we could get in on that. So for that request, we are asking each county for 27,010. And also just a tidbit of information, the last few years, we've grown about 3 to 5% in ridership. This year, 2025, we're expecting about 138,000 rides. Of those, 62% will be within Douglas County. So about 86,000 rides will be provided in Douglas County. Any questions?
Mr. Chair, I got a question. Brenda, can you get the buses? I know before when you try to get them, it's like you're two, three years out.
They are, they're finally back to normal production. Yeah, last year, I think as of last year, we were behind four years and we received 14 buses in one year. So it was a, it was a fun, but challenging year.
Right.
So yeah, now they're, we order typically in the spring of the year and the buses are now projected. In fact, we're actually projected to get a couple buses in the next couple of weeks. So.
For '25.
Correct. Yes.
We're finally back to the year.
Right.
It's first time. It, Brenda and the staff is doing a pretty good job with, because we're getting, well, keeping the rest of them running. And then, so we don't run into this in 10 years where we got to have 15 buses because we got 15 buses in one year. We got 22, 23s all.
Spread it out.
You want it spread out so you don't have a huge, you don't have that up and down on the budget like that.
Okay.
And that's why she put in that request. I know we've talked about this at Rainbow Rider meetings and, and that's a capital cost. All six counties pay the same towards the capital stuff. So it's, if you get, that's our share. If we can get advantage of the 10% funding instead of the 20%, which is what it used to be prior to COVID. So it's going back there. Okay, anything else?
That's all I have.
Alrighty, any other questions? Alrighty.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Tara Bitson, Lakes Area Chamber of Commerce.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I can try to shave a few minutes off and try to get you cut back up. Information in your packet, we do what we've always done. I go through this every year, just some of the highlights. We have got the new gift card program launched. That was one of the exciting things to help retain dollars locally. So we were using the antiquated paper checks. It's now a plastic gift card and we rolled that out quietly earlier this year and now we're strongly marketing. It's working very well. Again, we can save 100 to 200,000 a year, keeping those dollars all local. So we're very excited to have this new program in place. Currently still onboarding businesses. We're at just under 50 businesses accepting it now. Previously, we had 250 businesses accepting the paper chamber bucks. So we've got a ways to go to get, get that up there, but many of them were kind of just sitting back and watching it get launched to make sure all the kinks were worked out. So we expect that number to go up pretty quickly now. Also, yeah, yeah, one more brought on just in the last hour. So also, you know, you've, the conversation's been going for quite some time about the Economic Development Commission, the Explorer of Elektrism and the Chamber being under one roof. That should be happening January 1st. So that'll be an exciting change offer us to have some more efficiencies, some more shared services and programming and while I can't disclose the location yet because the building owner has asked us not to, we should be hearing about that soon. And again, January 1st is a target date for that. So been a long time coming, but we're very excited about that and what that could mean for the community. We're keeping our request at 4,000. The reason for the $4,000 is simply because that's the top level membership tier. That's what our top businesses in the community pay. We can manage without your funding, but again, it's really good for the city and the county to be involved. We offer you all the in-kind benefits that are listed on that sheet, discounted rates for different things, but it's just kind of a key partnership. And we do get asked from some businesses, what kind of funding comes from the city? How does the county support this? And to say that you've got skin in the game at the same level as, as some of our larger businesses in the community that are contributing that much annually for the work we do for the economic wellbeing of the community through our retention and engagement programs for workforce, our work that we do with the childcare situation and all of those type of things. So we're not asking for an increase, we're just asking for you to continue. If you could have a membership, you'd be at the $4,000 rate and that covers, all Douglas County employees get all full chamber benefits when the colony is considered an in-kind member through your donation. Any specific questions for me?
Just how was this summer compared to last summer?
Busier.
No?
It is very busy. If you've driven up and down Broadway at all on a Saturday, you'll see the people. People doesn't always equate to dollars, but I have been talking to many of our retailers along Broadway and they're saying the numbers are definitely much higher than last summer. So people aren't just visible, they're actually spending money, which is a good thing.
Yep.
So it has been very busy. Lots to do in the community, which is equating to a greater draw for people to come to Alexandria. I mean, you look at the calendar, there's something happening here all the time. Musical opportunities, just so many things happening. The Saturday Art Market and the Farmer's Market down on the north end of Broadway on Saturdays has just made a mini-community down there on Saturdays. The traffic is crazy and, and that's a good thing. A lot of those people then spill downtown and people are coming into the community, staying overnight, making long weekends out of it, filling our resorts. Most of our resorts have reported very few vacancies for the entire summer. So it's good news.
Very good. Any other questions?
All right, thank you.
Yep, thank you. Alrighty. Do a break.
Folks, and we're going to start out with Wendy Rowland, Central Minnesota Elder Network.
Good morning. I think it's still morning. Yes.
Yep, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Thank you for having me. I am Wendy Rowland, Executive Director of Elder Network. As you can see on our request, we have six primary programs that we present in Douglas County and outside of Douglas County, too, if we have the need, and we have volunteers that are willing to provide those services. We have been in the area for thirty years, almost thirty years, thirty years next year. As you know, the population of Douglas County is over thirty-eight thousand, and of that, almost thirty percent is eligible for Elder Network services. The, I was gonna mention, as Shelley Kay did, the areas of Douglas County where we do have clients, they are the cities of Brandon, Garfield, Alexandria, and Osakis, townships of La Grande, Miltonah, Home City, Idaho, Leaf Valley, Hudson, and Alexandria Township. We, last year in 2024, in just our visiting program, where that is where a volunteer is matched with a client who just needs a little bit of socialization, they have experienced some loneliness or isolation, and their volunteer comes and visits with them in their home. We had over thirteen hundred visits, volunteer visits, totaling over sixteen hundred hours, and that was about forty visiting clients in the county. So the services that we provide help keep, help keep people in their homes. It helps keep them healthier, mental health wise. It helps delay the need for other direct county funding through such agencies as social services. So basically, we are asking, oh, first I was gonna just mention a couple of testimonials that we've gotten just in the last two weeks. One is from a family that we worked with in the past, and she says, "Thanks for all you do for our seniors. Your team was a lifeline for my father, and I'll always have gratitude for the support, friendship, and compassion you shared." The second was from the sister of a client that we had. She said, "My sister enjoyed volunteering at Coffee Break, which is our out-of-home respite program, and at the Elder Network office. The Elder Network furnished iPad, and internet connection was her link to the community in her last couple of years. Thank you for all you do." So we are respectfully asking for appropriation of fourteen thousand this year. It is an increase over last year. The primary reason for that is, as you heard from Heather Pender from Dancing Sky, Area Agency on Aging, they distribute and manage the older Americans Act dollars that come from the federal government. We do receive a grant through Dancing Sky for our respite program. Those dollars have not been approved past 2025. So I know that there is a bill in the Senate right now to extend those from 2026 through 2030. That's, hopefully that will happen. But with that funding uncertainty, we are asking for a slight increase. We are doing what we can to potentially offset the loss of those funds. I have an amazing Board of Directors who have put together a matching grant, kind of a matching funds initiative, with the match coming from supporters of Elder Network that we have initiated, and that was successful. So we are doing what we can, and we're just asking for local support for our seniors.
Okay, just a quick question there. Like, for example, do you have any interaction with like the Dancing Sky, or like Senior Center, or Horizon Health? I mean, do you?
Yeah, so we do get the, the grant from Dancing Sky, and so that's a contract grant. So we're awarded a certain dollar amount, and then as we provide the services to seniors, we're reimbursed the amount that was calculated into the grant amount. We receive referrals from Horizon quite often, social services also. The Senior Center, actually Shelley Kay is a new board member, so we're really excited about working more with them.
All right. Any other questions? All righty. Well, thank you.
All right, thank you.
All righty. Brad Brayhaugh, and the Douglas County Fair Board.
Good morning.
He looks tired.
Great fair, by the way.
Thank you. Thanks for having us, Commissioners. I want to start off, first off, by thanking you guys, not only for the past contributions that helped us, but also the use of the grounds that we swapped with you guys and sold to you guys. Those of you that were out there probably saw that we would have been in serious trouble had we not been able to continue to park our vehicles back on your property out there. So thank you for that right from the start. I want to start off just by saying we are asking for an increase of five thousand over last year. We greatly appreciate what we have, and we're willing to accept anything the, the county commissioners choose to give us. Starting off just with a few updates on our fair this year, this is the first year that we fully owned the fairgrounds property ourselves, and as a result, we had to, we made some changes to the fairgrounds. One of the things that really stood out was our playground. That idea came up at one of our fair board meetings to put a permanent playground in that can be used year-round out there, not just during the fair. That was almost a forty thousand dollar commitment that we did there. We have made some other improvements out there to the grounds and continue to do so. I'll talk a little bit about some of our future projects in a minute, but just some of our other expenses, one of the things we got hit with this year was we got audited by the state. We were not prepared for that. Nobody ever prepared us for what an audit from the state was going to be, be like. It was a year-long process of Kevin, our treasurer, and myself being called by them. Fortunately, we had our ducks in a row, and it looks like we're gonna pass the audit. But what really hit us hard was it was a thirty thousand dollar cost to us to have that audit that we had to pay. That was thirty thousand we had not set aside and did not know it was coming. We have talked with the, we met with some of the higher-ups from the Minnesota County Fair Association and stuff that we belong to, and found out that hardly any counties have ever been audited by them. So it was a total surprise to us, but that was a big hit of thirty thousand dollars that we weren't planning on. Not that I'm asking you guys to pay that, but just to show where some of our money went this year. Some of the things that we improved also out there was we improved a lot for our kids. We wanted the kids to have a lot of activities, so we brought in that foam zone. I don't know how many of you were out there. I know Commissioner Way and Commissioner Kalina, but I never, ever thought that putting a whole bunch of foam out on a road would make such a big deal, but there were adults and kids in there constantly. Some of the people behind me were talking about that, and it was just absolutely insane. But that foam zone, and that cost us ten thousand dollars to bring that in. So these acts are not cheap. None of our are cheap at all and stuff. Some of the biggest challenges we faced this year was parking. We were hit with, the community center was supposed to have been done, but because of rain and everything, that was behind. So because of that, we lost about four hundred parking spots that we could not use this year. We were also hit with the rain on Saturday, which took away about two to three hundred down there in that low area of that. So that's, was probably one of the biggest challenges we faced this year was parking, and we got asked, why did we change our parking? Well, Commissioner Kalina, having been on our board, knows that parking is one of the areas nobody wants to take. None of our board members want to deal with parking because it's probably the biggest aggravating part of our fair. We have two new young guys that came on board. They were elected this year, and they volunteered to take on parking. I put them in charge. I said, "It's yours. You own it. Do whatever you..." And so it was a trial thing, but we're gonna take some of the stuff from last year and this year and mix it together and make parking better. One of the biggest things, I think, that we're hearing the great comments on is our ten dollar pass for all four days. That went over huge. We took a gamble. We said, "Okay, this could cost us," because instead of people paying each day, they're gonna pay ten dollars. What we found was that people came back. Instead of one day bringing their grandkids and then done, they came back the next day. We had many people, and as a result, we went over sixty-two thousand people at our fair this year that came through the gates. That's an increase of about ten thousand over last year. I think that ten dollar wristband made a big difference. We have some things to work out with that for people that have to take it off to work and stuff. We're gonna deal with that. But we wanted our purpose for doing that, we were asked why we did that, our purpose for doing that, we wanted to make it affordable for people to come, and yet still be able to fund our fair. As you know, we're a self-funded fair. The commissioners are about the only outside source, other than sponsors that we get, and the gate fee pays our deal, our ticket in there. We pay insurance on those buildings. We pay maintenance on them year-round. We pay staff out there to maintain those grounds so people can use them. So that is part of why we are asking for the increase this year and stuff. We're hearing a lot of good comments on our fair. We're the tenth biggest fair in the state of Minnesota, and we, we take pride in that and want to continue to make it bigger and better, and that's our goal. So I'll take any questions you have on it.
Yeah, like I said, I was there two times, and because of the ten dollar fee, I came back. And so, yeah, it was a good fair. I, I thought it was what you need to have to have a good fair. I mean, a lot of food. I seen a lot of food getting eaten, and the bands seemed to be well-attended.
Sure. One, one thing I do want to say is I want to thank the county for letting the Sheriff's Office be out there.
Absolutely.
I talked to other county fairs, and they're, they don't have that ability. They don't have on-ground. We have the Sheriff's Office and the posse, and they're out there the full-time, and because of that, we did not have hardly any crime out there. I don't know of any that wasn't just related to something not fair-related. People feel very safe at our fair. They like our grounds are clean, but because the county commissioners allow the Sheriff's Office to be out there, we have a very, very safe fair.
Yeah, I think it's great. I think it's great.
Greg from the, Greg that runs our carnival, we were a little nervous at the start. He came to us on Monday before the fair, and he told us that every fair that he's had his carnival this year has been down on attendance.
Wow.
We were one of the very few fairs that went up, so he's very pleased.
Good. Mr. Chair, I got a question for Brad. Brad, the old Water Patrol building?
Yes.
You, I heard rumors you were gonna move it, now you're not gonna move it.
We are in it. We're not sure what we are gonna do. The city was partially interested in it. They're interested in it for sure.
So one of our comments was, we might be interested in it as a county. Don't just give a deck to them, and maybe we'd be interested.
Okay. Somewhere down there, we have to decide. We found out just to move it would be sixty-five thousand dollars.
That's what we heard.
And that's no concrete. That's nothing. That's just to move the building. And at this point, we're in a debate whether we do or not, and we're kind of leaning towards just selling it rather than then using the money. Good Hugh County just built three new barns. They were three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a piece to build them, and so we're looking at what are our options. We need to start looking at replacing some buildings. So if the county is interested in that, we will discuss with you guys, too.
Then I had one more question.
Yep.
Talking to some people and stuff about all the traffic on eighty-two, maybe down the road, working with us, we could get a road off of Winona and come in the backway now that we got that property. It might be another source of getting traffic.
I really like the fact that you mentioned that and that you're willing to consider that.
We should maybe look into that. I don't know.
We have, because of where the fairgrounds are set, we have one entrance.
Correct.
And it really does back up, but like one person told us, it's two hours on a Friday out of the year, but still, it does create a traffic backup. It frustrates people. I know what it's like. My kids were little, and I know what it's like to sit in a car with two or three little kids in line, moving a little bit at a time. Thank God, we have the posse to help us, but yes, that's been discussed, whether we could come off Cardinal Lane or Winona, and that's something we have to work together with you guys on to try and make that work.
Something maybe we can look into.
Yep, because it greatly would, it would help in a lot of different ways.
It would be Wild West Lane if, right, now maybe Cardinal, we can, because that access is where the new Water Patrol.
It would greatly, greatly help with the traffic to have things both in and out.
Only four days.
Yeah, this was my forty-second fair to work between the Sheriff's Office and being on the board, and for forty-two years, I can tell you that's been a problem since I started in eighty-two, so.
Part of it, you have to have control. That's part of your security. You know that as being a cop. So you can't have four or five exits either, then you don't have security.
And we don't have the staff. I mean, we're, the fair employees, a couple hundred people during the fair, and it's just, you know, it's the same as everywhere else. You just cannot find people that want to work, so.
You can find them, but they're not very many.
One comment that I heard a lot of is how clean the fair is. It's clean. The rides are all up to date. They're not, they've gone to some, some people have gone to carnivals where they didn't even want to go on the rides because they were that rickety. And another thing was, they were amazed at us hauling them back and forth, you know, when we'd go out, pick up people and bring them to the fairgrounds. So we've never had this at any other fair, you know?
Yeah, it's, we're trying to make it accessible for everybody. That's your goal. I was just talking to the lady back here, and she was talking about how the tar makes it accessible for wheelchairs and everything. And the one thing we want to say, this isn't just the fair board doing this. This is community, it's you guys backing us up. It says Douglas County Fair, even though it's not a county fair. It is, in some ways, a county fair because without you guys doing the stuff you do, we would not be able to do what we're able to do. And we want to keep improving and making it bigger and better all the time, so. And thank you, guys, commissioners that did come out there, and we did have the Commissioner Cart and former Commissioner Keith England was in there quite often, driving, as well as Commissioner Kalina, Commissioner Way. And so I guess we've set the precedence that we have to have a Commissioner Cart every year now, and we might end up having more, so who knows. So thank you, guys. Any other questions?
Yeah, I, I don't. Anybody? I was gonna say.
When you look at the detail on Douglas County Commissioner, take a good look at it on the calls card, unless it's gone already.
It is. Harold wanted them back, so, for some reasons. Otherwise, thank you, guys, very much, and we appreciate anything you'll consider giving us.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, Brittany Johnson. Douglas County Historical Society.
Good morning. I think I get to be perhaps the last good morning of the day.
It might be.
Which is exciting. Historic, truly. Thank you for having me this morning. I wanted to start by reintroducing who we are at the Douglas County Historical Society, a very active, independent 501(c)(3) with three full-time employees and many, many dedicated volunteers. July nineteen eighty-seven, DCHS began operating out of the historic Newton Nelson House, which is one of Douglas County's oldest publicly open structures. It is also a part of the challenges, but also the joys we get to work with, is being in that space. Our 2026 request is an increase of fifty thousand dollars, with five thousand of that going towards our insurance premium, and forty-five thousand dollars of that going towards support of semi-quintcentennial programs, which I will get into a little bit later. But first, I want to talk about what we've been up to at DCHS. Again, talking about the space we are in, it's a structure that was originally built in eighteen seventy-two. It's difficult to move thousands of people through that space. So instead, our goal is to be dynamic and in the community, responding to requests of where people want us, out at events, using forms of media at our disposal, like our local newspapers, social media, website, newsletters, to try and deliver that educational content and that educational programming to people wherever they're at. This year, we've been really excited. We've, last year, I talked about revamping the space and how we did that to build these two new rotating gallery spaces. So we've curated two exhibits, one on Rural Schools of Douglas County and on historic parades in Alexandria. I was very excited when, during that Rural Schools exhibit, we were visited by a hundred-and-two-year-old former rural school teacher of Douglas County. Those are really impactful, multi-generational moments that we're having. We are currently overseeing a new research grant into Native American history in Douglas County in preparation for another future exhibit or program, perhaps a short film. It is one of our most frequent public requests. It's about more Native American history in Douglas County. Folks know a lot about archaeological sites in the county, like the Bison Kill Site and Lake Victoria, certain village sites that are around lakes, and so we wanted to be able to deliver more history about that. So we are, again, right now, that's about a year-long project we're working on that is grant-funded, and we're very excited to, hopefully about this time next year, be able to share with the plans. We'll look forward to moving with that. We've been appearing at new community events with our new traveling exhibits. This year in particular, we featured Douglas County Daredevil Freddie Lund and a new traveling exhibit on threshing season. We've been hosting new educational events at DCHS, like our artifact chats, and creating accessible video versions of those programs. I'll talk about numbers for those in a second. But where we're going next is preparing for the semi-quintcentennial, the Big America Two Fifty in 2026, ongoing collections work, and hosting more onsite events in our newly revamped spaces. Next year will be the semi-quintcentennial. It is quite literally a once-in-a-lifetime event for us to bring the community together to celebrate one of the things we all have in common, which is where we live, and our history, and how we got to be here. We've already done the groundwork in exploring options for what elements of that celebration could look like. Potential events or living history affairs we could partner with. I have some personal and professional relationships with groups like the Living History Society of Minnesota, fur trade reenactors, some Civil War reenactors and artillery batteries, and folks that we would like to bring here for an event like a living history affair in Douglas County. We've started those conversations with local community groups as well, including local businesses, downtown Alexandria, our local museums and community groups. As we formalize this committee and our plans moving forward, our plan is to include the veterans group, our history groups from other parts of the county, and other big events to see what we can synergize. So we're bringing this Two Fifty celebration to all layers of our community in various ways. We're actually very lucky to have something in our collection. very lucky to have something in our collection that will be directly featured during the semi-quintcentennial. In eighteen seventy-six, a man named Nuchin J. Trenton lived in Alexandria. He was a visionary in many ways. He founded the first fire department. He was an early village officer. But perhaps most importantly for the centennial, he was one of our most prolific early photographers, and as part of the nation's first centennial...